Praise the Lord. Good evening, everyone. Let us stand for invocation given by Councilman Missions, followed by a pledge of allegiance.
Let us pray. Heavenly Father, I just want to thank you, Lord. Thank you for today. Thank you for our city. Thank you for our citizens, Lord, and thank you for my peers and our staff and our city, Lord, and just thank you for all that we do, Lord. I hope that you guide us to focus on serving and leading and making wise decisions, Lord, and doing things for the benefit of our citizens. Again, Lord, I thank you for all the blessings you have given us. I ask that you protect us, that you watch over us, that you protect our city, and most of all, I thank you for our Lord and Savior, Jesus Christ. In your name I pray. Amen.
Praise the Lord, good evening, everyone. Let us stand for invocation given by Councilman Missions, followed by a pledge of allegiance.
Let us pray. Heavenly Father, I just want to thank you, Lord. Thank you for today. Thank you for our city. Thank you for our citizens, Lord, and thank you for my peers and our staff and our city, Lord, and just thank you for all that we do, Lord. I hope that you guide us to focus on serving and leading and making wise decisions, Lord, and doing things for the benefit of our citizens. Again, Lord, I thank you for all the blessings you have given us. I ask that you protect us, that you watch over us, that you protect our city, and most of all, I thank you for our Lord and Savior, Jesus Christ. In your name I pray. Amen.
Praise the Lord, good evening, everyone. Let us stand for invocation given by Councilman Missions, followed by a pledge of allegiance.
Let us pray. Heavenly Father, I just want to thank you, Lord. Thank you for today. Thank you for our city. Thank you for our citizens, Lord, and thank you for my peers and our staff and our city, Lord, and just thank you for all that we do, Lord. I hope that you guide us to focus on serving and leading and making wise decisions, Lord, and doing things for the benefit of our citizens. Again, Lord, I thank you for all the blessings you have given us. I ask that you protect us, that you watch over us, that you protect our city, and most of all, I thank you for our Lord and Savior, Jesus Christ. In your name I pray. Amen.
Praise the Lord, good evening, everyone. Let us stand for invocation given by Councilman Missions, followed by a pledge of allegiance.
Let us pray.
Heavenly Father, I just want to thank you, Lord. Thank you for today. Thank you for our city. Thank you for our citizens, Lord, and thank you for my peers and our staff and our city, Lord, and just thank you for all that we do, Lord. I hope that you guide us to focus on serving and leading and making wise decisions, Lord, and doing things for the benefit of our citizens. Again, Lord, I thank you for all the blessings you have given us. I ask that you protect us, that you watch over us, that you protect our city, and most of all, I thank you for our Lord and Savior, Jesus Christ. In your name I pray. Amen.
Praise the Lord, good evening, everyone. Let us stand for invocation given by Councilman Missions, followed by a pledge of allegiance.
Let us pray.
Heavenly Father, I just want to thank you, Lord. Thank you for today. Thank you for our city. Thank you for our citizens, Lord, and thank you for my peers and our staff and our city, Lord, and just thank you for all that we do, Lord. I hope that you guide us to focus on serving and leading and making wise decisions, Lord, and doing things for the benefit of our citizens. Again, Lord, I thank you for all the blessings you have given us. I ask that you protect us, that you watch over us, that you protect our city, and most of all, I thank you for our Lord and Savior, Jesus Christ. In your name I pray. Amen.
Praise the Lord, good evening, everyone. Let us stand for invocation given by Councilman Missions, followed by a pledge of allegiance.
Let us pray.
Heavenly Father, I just want to thank you, Lord. Thank you for today. Thank you for our city. Thank you for our citizens, Lord, and thank you for my peers and our staff and our city, Lord, and just thank you for all that we do, Lord. I hope that you guide us to focus on serving and leading and making wise decisions, Lord, and doing things for the benefit of our citizens. Again, Lord, I thank you for all the blessings you have given us. I ask that you protect us, that you watch over us, that you protect our city, and most of all, I thank you for our Lord and Savior, Jesus Christ. In your name I pray. Amen.
Praise the Lord, good evening, everyone. Let us stand for invocation given by Councilman Missions, followed by a pledge of allegiance.
Let us pray. Heavenly Father, I just want to thank you, Lord. Thank you for today. Thank you for our city. Thank you for our citizens, Lord, and thank you for my peers and our staff and our city, Lord, and just thank you for all that we do, Lord. I hope that you guide us to focus on serving and leading and making wise decisions, Lord, and doing things for the benefit of our citizens. Again, Lord, I thank you for all the blessings you have given us. I ask that you protect us, that you watch over us, that you protect our city, and most of all, I thank you for our Lord and Savior, Jesus Christ. In your name I pray. Amen. Praise the Lord, good evening, everyone. Let us stand for invocation given by Councilman Missions, followed by a pledge of allegiance. Let us pray.
Heavenly Father, I just want to thank you, Lord. Thank you for today. Thank you for our city. Thank you for our citizens, Lord, and thank you for my peers and our staff and our city, Lord, and just thank you for all that we do, Lord. I hope that you guide us to focus on serving and leading and making wise decisions, Lord, and doing things for the benefit of our citizens. Again, Lord, I thank you for all the blessings you have given us. I ask that you protect us, that you watch over us, that you protect our city, and most of all, I thank you for our Lord and Savior, Jesus Christ. In your name I pray. Amen.
Praise the Lord, good evening, everyone. Let us stand for invocation given by Councilman Missions, followed by a pledge of allegiance. Let us pray. Heavenly Father, I just want to thank you, Lord. Thank you for today. Thank you for our city. Thank you for our citizens, Lord, and thank you for my peers and our staff and our city, Lord, and just thank you for all that we do, Lord. I hope that you guide us to focus on serving and leading and making wise decisions, Lord, and doing things for the benefit of our citizens. Again, Lord, I thank you for all the blessings you have given us. I ask that you protect us, that you watch over us, that you protect our city, and most of all, I thank you for our Lord and Savior, Jesus Christ. In your name I pray. Amen. Praise the Lord, good evening, everyone. Let us stand for invocation given by Councilman Missions, followed by a pledge of allegiance. Let us pray. Heavenly Father, I just want to thank you, Lord. Thank you for today. Thank you for our city. Thank you for our citizens, Lord, and thank you for my peers and our staff and our city, Lord, and just thank you for all that we do, Lord. I hope that you guide us to focus on serving and leading and making wise decisions, Lord, and doing things for the benefit of our citizens. Again, Lord, I thank you for all the blessings you have given us. I ask that you protect us, that you watch over us, that you protect our city, and most of all, I thank you for our Lord and Savior, Jesus Christ. In your name I pray. Amen. Praise the Lord, good evening, everyone. Let us stand for invocation given by Councilman Missions, followed by a pledge of allegiance. Let us pray. Heavenly Father, I just want to thank you, Lord. Thank you for today. Thank you for our city. Thank you for our citizens, Lord, and thank you for my peers and our staff and our city, Lord, and just thank you for all that we do, Lord. I hope that you guide us to focus on serving and leading and making wise decisions, Lord, and doing things for the benefit of our citizens. Again, Lord, I thank you for all the blessings you have given us. I ask that you protect us, that you watch over us, that you protect our city, and most of all, I thank you for our Lord and Savior, Jesus Christ. In your name I pray. Amen. Praise the Lord, good evening, everyone. Let us stand for invocation given by Councilman Missions, followed by a pledge of allegiance. Let us pray. Heavenly Father, I just want to thank you, Lord. Thank you for today. Thank you for our city. Thank you for our citizens, Lord, and thank you for my peers and our staff and our city, Lord, and just thank you for all that we do, Lord. I hope that you guide us to focus on serving and leading and making wise decisions, Lord, and doing things for the benefit of our citizens. Again, Lord, I thank you for all the blessings you have given us. I ask that you protect us, that you watch over us, that you protect our city, and most of all, I thank you for our Lord and Savior, Jesus Christ. In your name I pray. Amen. Praise the Lord, good evening, everyone. Let us stand for invocation given by Councilman Missions, followed by a pledge of allegiance. Let us pray. Heavenly Father, I just want to thank you, Lord. Thank you for today. Thank you for our city. Thank you for our citizens, Lord, and thank you for my peers and our staff and our city, Lord, and just thank you for all that we do, Lord. I hope that you guide us to focus on serving and leading and making wise decisions, Lord, and doing things for the benefit of our citizens. Again, Lord, I thank you for all the blessings you have given us. I ask that you protect us, that you watch over us, that you protect our city, and most of all, I thank you for our Lord and Savior, Jesus Christ. In your name I pray. Amen. Praise the Lord, good evening, everyone. Let us stand for invocation given by Councilman Missions, followed by a pledge of allegiance. Let us pray. Heavenly Father, I just want to thank you, Lord. Thank you for today. Thank you for our city. Thank you for our citizens, Lord, and thank you for my peers and our staff and our city, Lord, and just thank you for all that we do, Lord. I hope that you guide us to focus on serving and leading and making wise decisions, Lord, and doing things for the benefit of our citizens. Again, Lord, I thank you for all the blessings you have given us. I ask that you protect us, that you watch over us, that you protect our city, and most of all, I thank you for our Lord and Savior, Jesus Christ. In your name I pray. Amen. Praise the Lord, good evening, everyone. Let us stand for invocation given by Councilman Missions, followed by a pledge of allegiance. Let us pray. Heavenly Father, I just want to thank you, Lord. Thank you for today. Thank you for our city. Thank you for our citizens, Lord, and thank you for my peers and our staff and our city, Lord, and just thank you for all that we do, Lord. I hope that you guide us to focus on serving and leading and making wise decisions, Lord, and doing things for the benefit of our citizens. Again, Lord, I thank you for all the blessings you have given us. I ask that you protect us, that you watch over us, that you protect our city, and most of all, I thank you for our Lord and Savior, Jesus Christ. In your name I pray. Amen. Praise the Lord, good evening, everyone. Let us stand for invocation given by Councilman Missions, followed by a pledge of allegiance. Let us pray. Heavenly Father, I just want to thank you, Lord. Thank you for today. Thank you for our city. Thank you for our citizens, Lord, and thank you for my peers and our staff and our city, Lord, and just thank you for all that we do, Lord. I hope that you guide us to focus on serving and leading and making wise decisions, Lord, and doing things for the benefit of our citizens. Again, Lord, I thank you for all the blessings you have given us. I ask that you protect us, that you watch over us, that you protect our city, and most of all, I thank you for our Lord and Savior, Jesus Christ. In your name I pray. Amen. Praise the Lord, good evening, everyone. Let us stand for invocation given by Councilman Missions, followed by a pledge of allegiance. Let us pray. Heavenly Father, I just want to thank you, Lord. Thank you for today. Thank you for our city. Thank you for our citizens, Lord, and thank you for my peers and our staff and our city, Lord, and just thank you for all that we do, Lord. I hope that you guide us to focus on serving and leading and making wise decisions, Lord, and doing things for the benefit of our citizens. Again, Lord, I thank you for all the blessings you have given us. I ask that you protect us, that you watch over us, that you protect our city, and most of all, I thank you for our Lord and Savior, Jesus Christ. In your name I pray. Amen. Praise the Lord, good evening, everyone. Let us stand for invocation given by Councilman Missions, followed by a pledge of allegiance. Let us pray. Heavenly Father, I just want to thank you, Lord. Thank you for today. Thank you for our city. Thank you for our citizens, Lord, and thank you for my peers and our staff and our city, Lord, and just thank you for all that we do, Lord. I hope that you guide us to focus on serving and leading and making wise decisions, Lord, and doing things for the benefit of our citizens. Again, Lord, I thank you for all the blessings you have given us. I ask that you protect us, that you watch over us, that you protect our city, and most of all, I thank you for our Lord and Savior, Jesus Christ. In your name I pray. Amen. Praise the Lord, good evening, everyone. Let us stand for invocation given by Councilman Missions, followed by a pledge of allegiance. Let us pray. Heavenly Father, I just want to thank you, Lord. Thank you for today. Thank you for our city. Thank you for our citizens, Lord, and thank you for my peers and our staff and our city, Lord, and just thank you for all that we do, Lord. I hope that you guide us to focus on serving and leading and making wise decisions, Lord, and doing things for the benefit of our citizens. Again, Lord, I thank you for all the blessings you have given us. I ask that you protect us, that you watch over us, that you protect our city, and most of all, I thank you for our Lord and Savior, Jesus Christ. In your name I pray. Amen. Praise the Lord, good evening, everyone. Let us stand for invocation given by Councilman Missions, followed by a pledge of allegiance. Let us pray. Heavenly Father, I just want to thank you, Lord. Thank you for today. Thank you for our city. Thank you for our citizens, Lord, and thank you for my peers and our staff and our city, Lord, and just thank you for all that we do, Lord. I hope that you guide us to focus on serving and leading and making wise decisions, Lord, and doing things for the benefit of our citizens. Again, Lord, I thank you for all the blessings you have given us. I ask that you protect us, that you watch over us, that you protect our city, and most of all, I thank you for our Lord and Savior, Jesus Christ. In your name I pray. Amen. Praise the Lord, good evening, everyone. Let us stand for invocation given by Councilman Missions, followed by a pledge of allegiance. Let us pray.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, Vice Mayor, Members of Council. I'm Michael Bremer. I reside in Ward 4. Some council members have disparaged the curfew as government intrusion into parents' traditional roles. Others have cited the lack of negative comments about the impartiality of the curfew to justify its continuance. LPD states that the overall goal of the curfew is to assist youth who might be at risk of becoming offenders or victims during those hours. In May of last year, Chief Zudema said the curfew has helped lower both property crime and violent crime in our city. Forty-eight people have been charged with violating the curfew, forty-six of them juveniles and two adults. However, between July and December of last year, a period covering most of the summer school vacations, only three people were charged, only three. Some say these numbers indicate that the curfew is working as a deterrent, but that's just speculation. Using a curfew to address juvenile crime is like poking at Jell-O. Youth crime has just moved to daytime or deeper into the shadows. The public does not know if any juveniles have been found guilty of violating the curfew, so the charging statistics are not particularly instructive. The following questions should be answered before council can make a reasoned judgment on the curfew. How many encounters were there that did not result in an arrest? And what are the demographics of those youth who were questioned? What are the demographics of those who were charged? And what is the final disposition of those forty-eight cases? Of the people charged, were any repeat offenders? Council cannot make informed decisions without this information. Decisions should be based on data, not intuition about efficacy. Hopefully, we'll get answers tonight. Numerous peer-reviewed studies conclude that juvenile curfews are not effective in reducing crime and victimization, and might also increase distrust between law enforcement and city residents. Curfews are inherently adversarial. LPD has frequently said that they need the help of the community, but neighbors need to feel trusted enough to share what they know about criminal activity, and they do know. Does patrolling for errant teams foster that relationship better than the recent neighborhood walks do? I understand the desire to do something, anything, to demonstrate that the government is being responsive to public concern and neighborhood outcry for help. I simply ask the council to consider imposing this law for no more than three months at this time, so that we can all be better educated about teen curfews before this comes up for renewal again. Thank you for your attention and time.
The next section is general business. It includes new items for discussion. Consideration of adopting ordinance in enacting a citywide youth curfew. This item was discussed during the council business briefing item on January fourteenth. May I have a motion, please?
Motion to pass the curfew.
Motion to pass. Do we have a second?
I second.
Is there any discussion? Yes.
I would like to propose an amendment in light of Mr. Bremer's comments and some of the discussions that we've had on council. First, I'd like to thank council for the last amendment that was passed in regards to language. Oh, I'm sorry. It needs a second and then discussion. My apologies.
No, no, no. Not that. And I don't mean to intrude. Mr. Mayor, our rules stipulate that those who Mr. Mayor, our rules stipulate that those who motion and second have first right of refusal to speak, and then I would recommend you listen to Mr. Bremer's amendment.
I apologize.
No, it's fine.
Mr. Farad?
That was me.
Oh, it's Kirk.
Go ahead.
Do we need a second on the amendment? That was the motion, but I've.
Yes. Yes.
Yeah, thank you.
We'll give you a comment first.
Go ahead.
I would defer to you, Ms. McConnell.
Ms. Reed?
Well, I appreciate the statements of Mr. Bremer. Y'all have heard me speak to this before. This curfew started after we lost three young people in as many months. While I appreciate what has been said so far this evening, we've also talked about this a lot, a lot. And there are other benefits to the curfew for the community. Yes, there are community members that have said initially, anything we can do, it needs to be done. And that was a lot of the outcry that we were hearing when we had had three children die within three months of each other. Then, the law enforcement community, you know, came in and told us, hey, there's some evidence that these youth curfews do work, and let's make the attempt to enact one. And so, we did, and then we revisited it and extended it. And I think that the logic behind looking at extending it again is we're still trying to gauge to see if there is a way to help keep the youth inside, doing safer things, making better choices. Just because we haven't arrested more doesn't mean that it's not effective. That means that they're not necessarily out late at night doing the things that we don't want them to be doing. They could be doing things other times of day, but we are trying to make decisions as a community to keep our youth safe and protected. And we don't want to see the numbers high of these kids being arrested for violating curfew. That's not what we want to see. You want the numbers to be low. So, if the numbers were really high, that's not good. So, the efforts that everybody's making is to keep the kids in safe places, to give them alternatives from being out on the streets, having, you know, getting into trouble. So, if parents and guardians know that there is a risk to them, a financial risk to them for not keeping their eyes on their kids, and that is effective, great. If the kids know, hey, they might get in trouble, there's a risk to them, and that's causing them to not be outside and getting into trouble, great. Then that means it is effective. We don't know exactly what those numbers were beforehand. If they don't want to be questioned by our police officers, and that's effective, good. The numbers being low is positive to me. Doesn't mean that we aren't still seeing some crime, obviously we are. But, I think that, Mr. Bremer, this is no disrespect to you. You're the only one we've had come speak against it. We have one council member that's spoken against it, and like I said at our last meeting, we are not having an overwhelming number of people begging us to discontinue the curfew. If anything, we're having more and more people in the city concerned about the crime rate. We lost a 16-year-old two weeks ago at the hand of another 16-year-old. So, we have to continue to do what it takes to protect these young people. And I don't think, at this time, ending the curfew is the thing to do. And like I said before, if there was an outcry to do so, we would have a lot more people lined up to tell us that, ask us that, emails, calls, and so forth. I don't think it's the right time to do it. I understand data, but I'm always going to advocate on behalf of the safety of our kids. And right now, I'm going to continue to support extending this at the recommendation of our chief until there's another reason to do so.
Ms. Timl?
Hello again, all right. Chris, thank you for, or Councilmember Farady, thank you for the correction on procedure there. I would like to make a motion to amend that we have a revisiting at the six-month mark as far as, in the form of a business item briefing, where we bring the Commonwealth attorney, city staff, and possibly the police chief to discuss the data results of the curfew and also continue to explore additional options of what may be more resourceful for addressing these issues within the community. So, not adjusting the time of the curfew that is put forward, not adjusting the language of the curfew that's put forward, but making sure that we are keeping the issue present before council in the nature of a discussion so that we can continue to address these issues more comprehensively. And that would be at the six-month mark.
If I may, may I make a recommendation? I believe there would be consensus among the Vice Mayor and Councilmember Reed to include that in their motion so we don't have to go through the rigmarole of an amendment.
Yes.
But if there would be, I'd be more recommendation. She just wants to review it after six months?
Yeah.
I would, if it's amenable, I would like to accept that as a friendly.
It sounds like the motion to adopt and keep the language of the ordinance is the same, but directing staff to have a review within six months on progress.
Yes. Yes.
An additional option.
If I may speak to the.
Mr. Farad?
Mr. Bremer, I have some info for you. Okay, so, of those charged, and this is available to the public although it's buried a little bit in the government website. I'm trying to say this very delicately, but if you find other resources related to city council, you can find it there. But I don't want to necessarily say what that is because that might be seen as campaigning for office. Needless to say, there are easier ways. Let's connect after and I'll show you where you can access it more easily. In any event, 16 people were charged out of 49, I believe. 16 people out of 49 individuals, that's a success rate of 32%. 58.3% of those charges were dismissed. So, I would like to point that out since that was just mentioned. Okay, shifting over to my main comments if I can. I've had a longstanding piece, a point of opposition to a curfew for a variety of reasons. I've articulated it from a philosophical approach to government. I see no difference between a curfew and a mask. If I'm opposed to someone saying, you are forced to put a mask on my child, I think the curfew is the same concept. Some folks don't necessarily agree with that, so I asked for, okay, well, let's focus on data. Here's what the data says. Since adopting the curfew, we've seen a 200% increase in aggravated assaults against crimes committed by juveniles. 200% increase in aggravated assaults. No decrease in homicides, a 100% increase in robberies, 58% increase in sexual assaults. Now, the next set of data is information for victims who are juveniles. Thankfully, a 19% decrease in aggravated assaults. 350% increase in homicides, 200% increase in robberies, 18% increase in sexual assaults, with a total increase of juvenile victims receiving this type of attack of 12%. Now, some might say that, well, maybe we're seeing a reduction by time of day, that it actually is helping at night. Juvenile violent crime in the morning is up 50%, afternoon plus 18%. And this is the statistic that I want everyone at home to understand why I'm trying to approach this, not just even from my own philosophical approach to government, but just the data. An 800% increase in juvenile violent crime in the evening and a 31% increase in violent crime by juveniles at night. Data is important. I see no reason why a curfew should be extended. If we're not arresting people, that's number one. And number two, if the data shows that, wait a minute, this is actually doing very little, if anything at all, to stop violent crime for young people. I don't care if you're 18 or 12. If you're going to be stupid and break the law, we're going to come and get you. Total results are 103% increase in juvenile violent crime since adopting the curfew for youth and 12% increase overall for victims. Worse, these increases were only with three people charged in a year. Yes, I do believe that government should be focusing on civil liberties and getting the bad guys, but in the end, I just don't see how this data will help us say that it is working. I do ask my colleagues to vote no, though I do realize some folks may disagree. The data is accessible through the council memos that are available on the city website. If you wanted to extrapolate that data in an easier manner, please see me afterwards or shoot me a message.
Mr. Wild?
Yes, thank you for the information. I do support the motion. Again, nothing is perfect, but it gives us, for our police department, it gives us more tools in our toolkit. So, I do support that. Like with the housing project and so many things, we look for different tools in our toolkit to attract, to make a comment in regards to delicate property. We have more tools now in our toolkit, the state used to pass some more items as well. So, I support the police department because they are recommending that as another tool in our toolkit. Again, we have teams out, we have a lot of challenges in our community and just another tool we can use to kind of, to do some, curb that issue. Sometimes, looking at the data, I can read it both ways. I could say maybe the curfew need to be earlier. So, you could read it in different kind of ways. So, I would go with the fact that the police are recommending it as another tool in the toolkit to address some of the issues in our community. Thank you.
Mr. Mission?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. You've heard a lot of us talk. I would like to see if Chief Zudema could weigh in for us, if that's acceptable.
Yes.
Thank you.
Mr. Mayor, Mr. Vice Mayor, members of council. I won't stand here and repeat everything that Deputy Chief Edward shared with you two weeks ago. You've heard that, I'm happy to answer any questions you may have on that. I would just say this, when we look at the numbers, and I appreciate Councilmember Farady sharing some of the percentages, those seem significantly high without question when you look at them by percentage. I would just ask you to look at the raw numbers. When we look at, for example, violent crime by juvenile offenders in the nighttime period, and when we say night for purposes of the data that we're discussing, that is the curfew hours from 11:00 p.m. to 5:00 a.m., that 31% increase at night is a difference of an average of 2.7 offenses versus 3.5. So, it's less than an offense. I realize, again, the percentages are what they are, but when we're really dealing with small numbers, those percentages can be skewed pretty significantly. Well, also, when we look at violent crime, sorry, violent crimes with juvenile victims, we're actually, during that nighttime hour, we're seeing a decrease of 9%. And to be fair, that's a difference between 17 and 15 and a half, right? So, it's one and a half less offenses. And very bluntly, if that's your child, you're probably grateful that one and a half less people were victimized by that. So, you know, we, as I think Dr. Wilder said best, it is another tool for our officers. It is not a panacea. I nor anybody from the police department has ever stood in front of you and said this will cure juvenile crime. What this does is gives our officers an opportunity when they see, and you've heard me give this analogy before, but a young member of our community that's out at 2:00 in the morning walking down the street carrying a backpack, there's a good chance they're probably breaking into cars. Without a curfew ordinance in place, our officers, without any other information, don't have a lawful reason to detain that person, to identify them and check and see what they're doing. With that curfew ordinance in place, we have that ability. I would also just like to address one of the things Councilmember Farady said in terms of charges and convictions. So, the total number is 49 charges, and I believe it was mentioned, and if I misstate your numbers, Councilmember, I apologize, but that very few of those, I think 58% I think is the number to use, were not convicted. So, the approach the juvenile courts are taking with these, I spoke with the Commonwealth attorney, Bethany Harrison, prior to coming here today. She took a sample from just one prosecutor. One prosecutor handled 23 of these cases that were juveniles. Three of them were found guilty, all others, so 20 of those 23 that weren't found guilty, they were taken under advisement by the courts. So, what the courts and the judges are doing is they're looking at this the same way we're looking at it. Our goal is not to see if we can get juveniles convicted of a curfew violation. Our goal is to change behavior, right? And how do we change behavior? The things the courts are doing to them, they take these charges under advisement so they show as not guilty when they're taken under advisement. They're given community service hours, they're oftentimes asked to write an essay on the dangers of being out late, or they're given a tour of the juvenile detention facility, or any combination of those three things. So, I just want to make sure that information was out there so we have that again. We're not trying to garner criminal convictions out of this, that's not the goal. The goal is to change behavior of both the juveniles and in some cases, even the adults. And I think, Vice Mayor, you mentioned a couple of weeks ago, this is another tool for some of our parents too, who may be in difficult situations. We've got a lot of kids in this community that are being raised by a parent and some that aren't even being raised by either of their parents. And we've got a grandmother that's, you know, probably in her 70s trying to do the best she can to raise a 13 or 14-year-old child. So, I'd just share that information, be happy to answer any questions you may have.
Thanks, thank you for sharing that, and I really appreciate it. And for me, it's hard not to look at this personally when I got one of my boys getting ready to turn 16, right? And, you know, we got to do what we can to keep these kids safe. One thing, I don't know if it's possible or not, but I can tell you, an eye-opener for some of these kids, and I've talked to some folks about it, is instead of doing a tour of the juvenile detention center, maybe we need to start giving them a tour of the Blue Ridge Regional Jail. Because I think that that is an eye-opener for people that have not been inside a jail, for these kids that are getting in trouble, to see what a real adult jail looks like and what a life of crime could do for them. I think that might be something we should potentially look into as an option.
Mr. Farad?
All right, you want to talk data, let's talk data, okay? 10 and 21 are different numbers, is that correct?
I'm sorry?
10 and 21 are different numbers, is that correct?
Yes.
That is 103% change. Data, yes, can be manipulated. I published it to my personal website, the data, because it's buried in council memos. I published an email from the city manager and you where it says, we only arrested three people in the last year. So, if you do want to skew the numbers, let's look at the raw info. The raw info says there were only 10 violent crime juvenile offenders before the curfew and the data that was provided over the last five years. After, it was 21. When it comes to juvenile victims of violent crime, it was 45. Now, it's 51. Is that an improvement, or did it get worse?
Again, it depends on perspective.
No, sir. Is 45 worse than 53?
In what context, Councilmember?
Did more violent crime against juvenile offenders occur after the curfew? Yes or no?
If you're looking at the difference, I'm looking at your chart.
That's not a yes or no, chief, and please.
Okay, I don't need to be talked down to, Councilmember?
Sir, you're.
I'm trying to explain and understand what you're saying.
Chief?
Okay? 45 to 51, if you want to ask me a question, I'd like the opportunity to answer it.
And I'll let you, chief. You told me that the data is being manipulated, so I'm not manipulating it in any way. Is 45.7 better or worse than 51?
I don't believe I told you any data was being manipulated. If I did, I'd like to hear that. 45 to 51 certainly is an increase. Yes, it is, that is overall. What I was sharing with you is the hour the curfew is in place, right? Which is different numbers, which is the 17 to the 15 and a half, which is a 9% decrease. We're talking about curfew hours here. We're talking about the impact of the curfew during those hours, that's what we're talking about.
Okay, so, regarding more violent crime in general, from the evening, you had one instance of violent crime committed by someone of this age group in the evening, which under your category is 5:00 to 11:00 p.m. After, you had nine.
So, evening for clarification, yes, 5:00 to 11:00?
Yes.
So, you're, are you, I'm looking at your chart that you provided, are you in the top section?
What chart did I provide?
I'm sorry?
What chart did I provide?
In an email that you sent back.
Okay.
The chart says evening hours, you're looking at violent crimes with juvenile offenders by time of day, is that correct? On the far right-hand side?
Yes, sir.
On the far right-hand side?
Yes, sir.
From 1:00 to 9:00?
Yes.
Correct. So what was the question?
So you're trying, what I'm hearing is 1:00 to 9:00 is the increase. Then, for night, when the curfew is actually in effect, it's 2.7 offenses. After, it's 3.5, which means it didn't even drop the offenses by youth in those hours.
That's correct.
I just want the record to reflect that, because what it sounded like is, no, I want to correct Chris on the data because it's being skewed.
I don't think...
The raw data is here, and I'm trying to make sure that it is not being misrepresented about what my intent was by the chief of police.
Okay, well, I don't think I ever said that you were skewing or misrepresenting it. I was just explaining other pieces of the data that shared the whole picture, I believe.
The whole picture is, overall, it was 10.3 before, now it's 21. I, how can I be told by the chief of police of Lynchburg, Virginia, that that is an improvement on deterring violent crime committed, not even against...
I don't believe you heard me say that was an improvement on deterring violent crime.
I know, I heard the exact opposite, but we're being told we should adopt this for another year. I yield back.
Ms. Reed?
I think it's important, and I know, Chief, you'll agree with this, that while I still maintain my support of this curfew, that just for the community to understand, our efforts here are to save children. Our chief and his officers do not enjoy arresting children. The curfew was put in place for their protection and for the protection of our city and our citizens. We have programs throughout the city that are trying their best to make it so Chief Zudema and his staff don't have to stop and ask them questions, don't have to arrest them. We had our 40 Ways Coalition meeting last night, and we were reminded again about what causes a lot of these children in our city to end up making these decisions that put them in the back of patrol cars. And we had Jeff Nitz from 518 Family Services, who's getting his doctorate in trauma, talk to us and tell us that the four things that children need consistently are to be seen, loved, noticed, and heard. And that when that's not consistent in a child's life, they have an increased risk of hyperactivity, lack of engagement, and massive behavior problems. We also know that the inability to read is one of the number-one predictors of incarceration. So when we have children consistently in our schools right now that have a below-third grade reading level, they have an increased risk factor of 70% to be incarcerated. Do your research and see how many people that are in jail right now that can't read. Do your research on the number of kids that are in our juvenile detention center who cannot You would be appalled. We have to do everything that we can do to get these kids on the right path. This, as Dr. Wilder has said, is a tool in the toolkit. Our law enforcement community is a reactive mechanism. They're law enforcers. But we, as a community, have to be willing to be preventative for these children. We have the Jubilee Center, we have Big Brothers, Big Sisters, we have the Boys and Girls Club, we have Iron Lives, we have all these, we have churches on every corner, we have people that should be mentoring. And what Mr. Nitz said last night is that children who have meaningful relationships, meaningful relationships, if they don't have a mother or father, there are other people in their lives that can be meaningful and consistent, they will have a greater chance of success and less chance of being in the back of a patrol car. And then we don't have to have curfews. I'm sorry I'm being long-winded, but y'all need to hear this as a community. We need more people involved in these children's lives, and then we won't have to have curfews. Thank you, Chief.
Thank you, thank you, Chief.
Thank you.
And as far as I'm concerned, you will have your curfew.
Mr. Mishings?
Mr. Mayor, let's call a question.
Call a question?
Call a question. The call question is calling for the vote. That's the motion to adopt the ordinances presented with the direction to have a review and some updates and new ideas from staff in six months.
Yes, okay. Please cast your votes.
All right, I'm just gonna go now.
Next item, consideration of introducing a resolution amending fiscal year 2025 general fund budget and appropriating $116,160 from general fund reserve for contingency and provide additional demolition funding. This item went before finance committee earlier today, and I will defer to the chair of that committee, Mr. Mishings.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Just for the record, that number should be $86,160. We unanimously adopted appropriating $86,160 from the general fund, excuse me, the reserve for contingencies to perform demolition on these homes that were determined to be unstable and public safety threats. We left one of those homes off of that because the discussion was that we weren't comfortable with just putting the notice of demolition out on a home just because it had foundation issues. There needs to be some more information about that. So one of those homes, we did not approve. And I'll make it as a motion to adopt that.
Second.
No need for a second.
Is there any other discussion?
Mr. Wilder? Yeah, I'm on the committee as well. You know, we did take one off. It was just a consensus, it was consensus, but they're going to revisit that. We didn't have enough money in our budget for prior year to address that. We have a lot of dilapidated property that was falling down. It was a hazard. So I'm so thankful to be switching some funds over to address that property and just lets us know in the budget process, we need to assign more funds to that program so more property can be demolished, but it was a hazard. Two of the properties were fire hazards, people had started fires in the buildings. It could have went to other properties, so I'm glad it did not. But we do need more funds in that coffer so we can make sure we address those issues going forward. Thank you.
Mr. Dean?
Yeah, I was pleased to be able to support the use of the contingency fund this time for the demolition of these derelict homes, especially the ones that are in emergency status and a threat to the public safety. So those four have been funded this time from contingency. I would just state my personal preference on things of this nature is that I don't know what the history is, and maybe somebody will educate me, but using the contingency fund for it seems a little unusual. I'd like to see this stuff normally come through the regular budget, just in general practice. I think in the future, that would be my preference.
And I think the challenge was it was cut out of the, neither budget was reduced. I think that's what the challenge was. That's why there wasn't enough fun in there because it was reduced by the last council.
City manager wanted to...
Yes, sir.
So you're about to enter the budget process, and it's a voluminous document that Donna Witt will give you and you can use to help buttress your door open. It's a big, massive, I'm having fun with that. Dr. Wilder, somewhat, a little amendment. We've increased the amount of, the amount of money that goes into the community development department to meet blighted and/or derelict properties to meet demolition. Where this council and previous councils have kind of moved into spaces, helping to support the community development, to help take the appropriate actions when there's a circumstance where there's a home that we've exhausted personal insurance and other things that are associated with the home itself and move to help demolish. We've worked in a couple of different areas, not the least of which is the Diamond Hill area, and the presidential streets that I say, just in my own way, as a takeaway, that are not so presidential. And what we find is that there are tremendous amount in there. And so what we've had is that our team has been very active in moving ahead into those spaces that you've helped us get into. And what we did was, in a very short period of time, this fiscal year that's beginning July 1, we've expended the resources to meet what we've seen that have increased because of our code enforcement. And so what we found is that these were some properties, because we've already, we've expended the funds to this point, which was December. These came up, they, like with anything, can cause additional problems other than just what you see physically. And so this is a matter of city staff moving really headlong into space to where we expended those funds, the funds that were earmarked in the fiscal year. Can't remember whether or not reduced or augmented, but we've expended those, and now we're here. So Vice Mayor Deemer, it is in our practice to leverage the contingency. We would rather not do so. And so to the degree that we can in this impending budget, help kind of appropriately scale what we would offer as a recommendation, as the pot of money, if you will, that we can refer to out of Mr. Martin's fund, I always want to call him White, but it's Mr. Martin, because I get the two mixed up, we'll do so. So thank you, Dr. Wilder, for having, recognizing, and I appreciate the conversation.
Okay. Mr. Mishings?
I just want to point out that, I think it was, two of these homes were fired.
Correct.
Excuse me, three of these homes were tremendous fire damage.
Yes.
That there's no insurance, and there's a process in place after the fact to try to recover these funds.
Yes, sir.
And staff has assured us that they will be moving into that space after the demolition is completed to do what they can to recover these funds. In addition to that, something else that Mr. Martin explained very well to us is that sometimes giving them the ability to actually proceed and start doing these notices will create a situation that urges the property owner to take action on their own. And so that's the ideal situation, is that these property owners will take action on their own on these properties. And just because we have appropriated those funds does not mean they need to be used if, in fact, going through the notice process creates a situation where they take action.
Completely agree. It's a happy problem not to have, if we don't have to expend the resources.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor.
Is there any more discussion? Will we vote?
The motion has the wrong dollar now. I can't change that.
Okay.
Yeah. The motion passes 6-1.
Next item, consideration of introducing a resolution amending the FY 2025 city, federal, and state aid fund budget appropriating $200,380 to purchase night vision equipment for the police department. This item went before finance committee earlier today, and I will defer to the chair of that committee, Marty Mishings.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So, very simple. This is a grant that we normally go after annually to support our police department with equipment, and we're getting night vision equipment to replace a very old night vision with this. And I believe that the police chief is here to make a presentation on that. And as Mr. Mayor stated, it will not need a second, so after you make a presentation, I'll be happy to make the motion to approve this.
Yeah, just to add, no local match required on this. This is a competitive grant we were awarded. It's to replace equipment that's about 14 years old, and the average lifespan of that type of equipment is usually about four or so. So it'll upgrade the equipment to much more current technology to help keep our officers and our community safe.
Sounds good, and I'll make that motion to adopt this.
You move? No. Is there any other discussion? No? Then let's vote.
I'm just changing the vote now.
Consideration of introducing a resolution amending...
Yeah, just one second.
Oh, it didn't?
The motion passes 6-1.
Okay, gotta hear it myself. Go on. Consideration of introducing a resolution amending the FY 2025 city, federal, and state aid fund budget appropriating $35,870 for DUI enforcement activities, equipment and training. This item went before finance committee earlier today, and I will defer to the chair of that committee, Marty Mishings. This item does not require a second.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. This did come before us, again, in the finance committee earlier this afternoon, and again, this passed by consensus. I'll go ahead and let the chief take over on this.
Yeah, local match required on this is $12,814. That's already accounted for in our 2025 general fund budget for the police department. I will use this to do selective enforcement for DUI, keep our roadway safe.
And again, this item does need a second, and I'll make the motion to adopt it.
Is there any discussion? No discussion? Let's vote.
I'm just changing the vote now. The motion passes 6-1.
On to the next item. This is, the screen's still up. Consideration of introducing a resolution amending the FY 2025 city, federal, state aid fund budget appropriating $58,885 for speed enforcement activity equipment. This item went before finance committee earlier today, and I will defer to the chair of that committee, Mr. Mishings. This item does not require a second.
Thank you again, Mr. Mayor, and I will let the police chief take this one away as well.
So this grant, very similar to the DUI grant we get annually from DMV. Local match required is $20,485. Again, that's accounted for in the FY 25 general fund budget for the police department. This will be used for speed enforcement in the city.
Thank you, Chief, and I'll make the motion to adopt this resolution as well.
Is there a second? No second? Okay, is there any discussion? No discussion? Let's vote, please.
I'm just changing the vote now. The motion passes 6-1.
Consideration of introducing a resolution amending FY 2025 city, federal, state aid fund budget appropriating $89,400 to purchase 79 replacement bulletproof vests for law enforcement. This item went before finance committee earlier today, and I will defer to the chair of that committee, Mr. Mishings. This item does not require a second.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Again, I'll let the chief take this one away.
Again, annual award we get for this grant requires a 50% match, $44,502. That is accounted for in both the police and sheriff's office 2025 budget. We administer that grant for both of those departments. This is a replaced vest. They have a five-year lifespan. That's the soft body armor that our officers wear underneath their uniforms.
Thank you, Chief, and I'll make the motion to adopt that as well, and I'd like to speak to that.
You may.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. There's nothing more important that we can do as a council than making sure we provide you and our firefighters all the resources that we can to get our guys... you and our firefighters all the resources that we can to get our guys and our girls home at the end of the shift. And I mean that. This one's important. This is a lifeline, right? And this should pass 7-0. Thank you.
Chief, what do y'all do with the old vest?
Sometimes they're used out at the range for different things. There's been some, and the city attorney could probably speak to this, I don't mean to put him on the spot, but there's some questions on whether or not they can be donated or not based on concerns for liability, because the manufacturer only warranties them for those five years, which is why we replace them in those five years. And so sometimes they are destroyed when they're done, just because of concerns of passing those along to other people.
Yeah.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, sir. Mr. Mishings?
One other thing I want to add, it's a little personal for me. I wouldn't be here today if it wasn't for ballistic vests, because my dad got shot in the chest as a Philadelphia police officer. And if it wasn't for the vest he was wearing, he'd be dead.
Is there any more discussion? Thank you, Chief.
Thank you, Mayor.
Let us vote, please.
Initiating the vote now. The motion passes 6-1.
This meeting is adjourned. Our next meeting will be held on February 11 at 4:00 p.m. at Lynchburg Regional Business Alliance.